Item number three, discussion and possible action on reports from the emergency management director, Grady County Fire Department, safety director, and construction superintendent. Dave?
We had some good rains, much needed rain, varied anywhere from two to three inches all over the county. Luckily, we didn't get any of the six tornadoes that happened over east of us and everything. Today and tomorrow will be good and clear and nice, and then rain will move back in Wednesday, and it'll probably be in there for a while. But right now, doesn't seem to be a severe threat at all. That's about it really, okay.
Kim?
We did have our board meeting Tuesday night, had nine of our 10 members there. Yesterday, yeah, yes, no, Saturday, they had training, airbag LZ plus training at Tuchet Fire Station one. I think that's about it in my head.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Bobby?
Last week, we did have a form report for injury. Did analyze the details of the incident and tried identifying the potential measures we can implement to avoid future injuries. Also this week, I'll be conducting our monthly corporation fueling tank inspections with all three barns. Is just to ensure that in cases of any potential fueling executive poses risk to our facility and personnel. Also be performing our monthly facility walkthrough, also just checking for potential hazards and ensuring all the work spaces are safe. Additionally, I will inspect all the fire extinguishers to confirm they are fully charged and accessible. Later this week, I'll be conducting a sheriff's safety meeting, and then I will not leak. I had an opportunity to hang out with District One paving crew, just doing overall work site inspection. I was impressed by their commitment to their safety and efficiency. Zach, you guys are doing a great job, people do great work.
Thank you.
That's all I have to give.
Thank you, Bobby.
We finished the bathroom to utility room conversion at O S U last week. The architects will be here tomorrow at two with the first revision of floor plans. And then we should be starting on your electrical this week as soon as we get item eight on the agenda figured out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Item number five, public comments. Comments from the public will be limited to two minutes. Time may be extended at discretion of the board.
I'm here for another thing.
Oh, okay. All right, item number six, new business. In accordance with the open meeting act, Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, three eleven, eight, nine, new business is defined as any matter not known about or which could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time posted in the agenda. Item seven, discussion and possible action on a hope and healing project monthly report. All right, thank you, Mike. Item number five, public comments. Comments from the public will be limited to two minutes. Time may be extended at discretion of the board.
I'm here for another thing.
Oh, okay. All right, item number six, new business. In accordance with open meeting act, Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, three eleven, eight, nine, new business is defined as any matter not known about or which could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time posted in the agenda. Item seven, discussion and possible action on a hope and healing project monthly report.
Gary, do you know what the portal is, what, how to get on that portal? I had some questions, I didn't know she'd be here today.
No.
Okay.
I'm here.
Oh, so, okay, sorry, it said housing assistance portals live. How do people get on that and how do they qualify?
They're referred, usually through the sheriff's department, they're going to be referred, and it comes directly to me.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. For him, second it, I'll second it.
Who second it?
I said, yeah, I will approve it, so I made a motion to approve. Zach seconded it.
Okay.
Or Jill.
Item number eight.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Sir?
Yes.
You want to pass any on being heard?
Well, it does embarrass anyone signing it.
Okay. Item eight, discussion and possible action on county commissioners' parking signs, designated parking spots. I put that on there because we discussed changing modes to official parking.
Just reserved parking, yeah, reserved parking violators will be towed.
Okay, I want to request on the commissioners that we leave them at the same. If y'all don't have a problem with that.
That bother me in any way?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So is this be acknowledgement then, or make a motion to approve that?
I'm going to approve, sign off.
Okay, I'll make motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item number nine, discussion and possible action on free parking signs located at the health department building that was put up by the city of Chickasha.
I'll put this on there. Kayla Jarrett had messaged me, sent me that picture right there, and those parking lots are our parking lots. I don't know about y'all, but they're the ones that maintain them, and so I don't know about, I think that's a pretty good way to get semi parked in there, big truck parked in there or something, so.
I always park there when something's going on downtown, just because I know it's there, and I mean, I know a lot of people utilize it, and I didn't realize that they had put those signs out, and I don't know how they did that. I mean, I just assume everybody knows when they go downtown, if you're in that part of the city, you know, something's going on, you just park there, I don't, I don't know why the city did that.
I told Kayla we'd put it on here so we could talk about it, if we want to return their signs or.
Do you know if Kayla knows if that parking lot is actually ordered or not?
She sorted it out that it is ordered.
I pulled it up on the assessor's website because I was concerned about that too. I pulled it up on the assessor's website, and it does show both of those, yeah.
She called the city of Chickasha, asked them to take them down, and I guess they kind of told her no, so.
Do you want me to call?
It doesn't matter.
Do you see and find out?
I can call them, but I didn't know if y'all, I just want to make sure y'all are on the same page as.
I mean, I think people should be able to park there, and they're going to park there anyway on Saturdays. I just don't know why they thought they were going to do that.
The issue would be during the week when they're trying to do business.
And I don't know that it's, you know, we were over there at three o'clock the other day, and it was, there was maybe eight parking spots. I think it's when, you know, like they'll have the open streets and when they have the boom truck competition and stuff like that, but I mean, normal people that are from Chickasha, they go there and park. I mean, they know to go there and park, so I don't know if it would open up the liability since they put those signs up to us, up on us, I don't know.
Yeah.
But I think, yeah, they probably should have asked, but I did try to go on the assessor's website, and it looked like we did own it, because I was concerned about that too, what they loaned off.
Well, we've got that question kind of before, and I didn't know that we ever put it into.
And I meant to ask Shannon this morning, and I didn't get her asked, but I pulled it up over the weekend, and I saw it was showing the building and parking lot.
Yeah, it belongs to us.
Okay.
It was a, when we signed the contract, when we got the deed, all that was ours.
Yeah, that's, I looked, I did look it up.
Dr. Pepper used to park there, and when we bought it, we stopped him from parking it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a friendly thing that we leave it open for people to park. It's, you know, but they probably should have asked about the sign, put them up.
Yeah.
So I make a motion for Zach to do whatever he needs to do on this.
I'll second it.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item ten, discussion and possible action to use the county's deductible fund account to cover a claim for damage to six sheriff vehicles in the March 30, 2025 hailstorm storm.
We had several of the new Tahos that were damaged, and of course, being new Tahos are going to be, it's quite a bit of money, any place from fifty-three hundred all the way down to about forty-four hundred. We have six claims, so I didn't know how y'all want to handle that.
The only one I questioned, Gary, was the 2012, because it is 13 years old. It says it's only worth $10,213, and it's got $4,500 worth of damage. I didn't know if maybe we might not fix that one, just because I figured in about two or three years, you'll probably get rid of it. I.
Well, it's a reserved unit, so it doesn't get drove that much, so, but we can probably take care of that out of our funds, we can get the others.
Yeah, I just thought with as old as it is, and it's a little less than half the value to fix it, I didn't know if we might not want to fix that one, but that's, it doesn't matter to me.
I mean, that's fine with me, we can take care of that one.
Is, do we have a body shop in town that will meet these prices?
Car hams.
And he's got a P D R guy that's going to be there tomorrow, and so a lot of this is going to be P D R, unless they find one, I guess, like on a crack or.
Yeah, if it's on a, what I'm trying to think of, if on a crease, if it's on a van, then it's a little bit different. You can't pop that one out. I think there's one that may have something like that, and I'll take a look at it. If it's going to cost crazy money to, I will just leave it, especially if it's on top, I don't care about, you know, nobody's, nobody's going to be looking upstairs, so, but, yeah, on that one, on the 12, I mean, we can take care of that one if we get, rest of them taken care of, and I don't have an issue with that.
Did we decide on the $5,000 limit, or because they're not that mature, didn't we want to do it, just do them all?
We can do all of them, all of them, and then we should replace them.
Okay.
Got that hailstorm hanging pretty quick and.
And up high, you know, probably it's a big.
Yes.
My only one was the 2012, just because of the age and the price.
I don't think it has that many miles on it, if, I think it's still under 100,000 miles, if I remember right.
I mean, I'm good if y'all want to do all six, seven, I'll just have us the whole question I have.
Six, seven, of our, of our deductible fund. Yeah, the, that one that we created, not that one yet.
Yeah.
Instead of having, instead of having Echo cut a check?
Yeah, we just cut it out of that.
So just do all of those out of ours and not have Angie cut a check?
Yeah, there's like 100,000 in that account, so.
Okay, okay, because we'd already had her send somebody down here to do.
Yeah, who signs on that account, Sydney?
I don't know.
Okay.
But I'll be there figuring out.
Okay.
What do we call that account again, what's that account called? Is that, is that what we call it? Can you? I'll make a motion to repair all those out of the county deductible fund.
Second.
I'll get ahold of Angie today and tell her don't send us a check, and I'll just give everything to Sydney.
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Item 11, discussion and possible approval of a bid request for Grady County District Three selling various I-beams, C-channel, angle iron, catalytic arms, and drainage boxes. Make motion to approve that. Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item 12, discussion and possible approval to add Ruth Bingham as a requisitioning officer for the charity requisitioning department. Make motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item 13, discussion and possible approval to remove Julie Schrager and add Amy Coverley as receiving officer for the DA requisitioning department.
Make a motion?
Second. Back.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item 14, discussion and possible approval of the declaration of surplus of equipment in accordance with 19 Oklahoma statutes, three thirty-nine and four twenty-one through four twenty-one point two, condition three, I'll make that motion. Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item fifteen, discussion and possible approval of disposal of equipment for District Three in accordance with the provisions set forth in Title 19, section four twenty-one. I'll make that motion. Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, item sixteen, discussion and possible approval of disposal of equipment of the Grady County Fire Department in accordance with the provisions set forth in Title 19, section four twenty-one. Make that motion. I'll second it.
Zach? Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item number seventeen, discussion and possible action on a solid waste request form for Grady County. Motion to approve. I'll second it.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item eighteen, discussion and possible approval of contribution in a construction agreement for electric distribution service, public service company, in Grady County District Three. Originally, we wanted to be paid first, but now we just need to sign it, so they don't worry. I'll second it. Do you?
Yes.
Issue six. Okay, item number nineteen, discussion and possible approval to deposit a check from Graham Auctioneers in the amount of $6,325 into the Grady County Fire Department M and O account for sale of items at auction. Make motion to approve. I'll second it.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
See you, Mike, have a good day.
See you, Mike. Item number twenty, discussion and possible approval to deposit a check from Graham Auctioneers in the amount of $7,130 into the sheriff's service capital outlay account for the sale of vehicles at auction.
Make a motion.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, item number twenty-one, discussion and possible approval to deposit a check from Graham Auctioneers in the amount of $74,060 into the Highway District Two capital outlay account for the sale of vehicles at auction.
Make a motion.
Second it.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item twenty-two, discussion and possible approval to deposit a check from Echo in the amount of $39,403.56 into the Highway District One capital outlay account for the total loss to a 2018 Chevy Silverado, I and V number three oh one zero zero seven two. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach? Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, item number twenty-three, discussion and possible approval to deposit a check from the Chickasaw Nation in the amount of $1,527,476.62 into Highway District Three M and O account for the reimbursement for PO 254533 for Grady County Bridge number three zero zero three, NBI number zero six one nine seven, according to an interlocal agreement, A dash twenty-four dash one oh eight. And I'll make that motion to approve. I'll second it.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item twenty-four, discussion and possible approval of utility pipeline road crossing permits, water line, fast line permits, and driveway ten on permits. I'll make a motion to approve.
Eight.
You got a eight. For District Three. Really?
Two on one, uh, two for one check, and then six for the.
Wow.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Are they all running close together? One to one bit pipeline, that's across six county roads, kind of, have an angle. We got two that are approving, so I can let them check on.
Check on.
Kim, District Three, didn't have any?
No.
Okay, item twenty-five, discussion and possible approval of blanket purchase orders. I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yeah, I'm still wondering why, and I've called and asked some questions, and I guess I need to ask more questions, why the senior citizens' sales tax fund is paying the senior citizens' association $3,500 a month for rent, and this is the only one that does this, so in a year, we have, they will have paid the $42,000 in sales tax money, and since this began, they have paid over $300,000. money, and since this began, they have paid over three hundred thousand dollars to use a building that is for senior citizens, and they're the only ones that are doing this. And I.
Are, uh, they don't have a place, the other senior citizens building they had down there, they lost it.
Yeah.
And they had to move into the one that they're in, and what kind of arrangements were made for all that was way before me.
Well, it, I mean, for sure, I mean, like Burden, I know that, they told me they'd pay them Sonic Lodge one dollar for ninety-nine years.
Yeah.
For, for thirty-five hundred dollars a month, they could've built their own building. I mean, we've spent a lot of sales tax money to put into another account.
Build on the building.
It's the Senior Citizens Association.
Yep.
So I.
Yep.
I have, I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time with this.
I understand.
And I, I called and asked one question.
Yeah.
And I got sent to somebody else, and I haven't called the other person.
Yeah.
But I just, it's hard for me to wrap my head around that the Senior Citizens Association that's there for the senior citizens is charging the Senior Citizens Sales Tax Fund thirty-five hundred dollars. And then the old deed or the old paperwork I read even said they have to pay for all their repairs and everything.
They do.
And so.
They have them.
So, and my thought is, if, okay, if we're going to do that, then anytime that we do work for them, we should be charging the Senior Citizens Association for any work that the county does, if this is what we're gonna do.
Do we have a copy, and I mean to interrupt you ma'am.
Yeah.
Do we have a copy of that contract I can get, cause?
The first con, the only contract I have seen is from like twenty twelve. I mean, when the sales tax first started, and I'm working on trying to gather, um, stuff, but I mean, it's just kinda.
That's the only contract.
Throwing me for a leap here.
I would like to look at that, cause there's something that doesn't sound legal about that. We need to get with Charles and.
They say they're a different entity, and that's the reason, but I, I'm just like, I just have a hard time seeing sales tax dollars spent that way.
Where does the Senior Citizens Association, where does, where does, who's over that?
I don't know. It's, uh, when you start calling and asking a few questions, you don't get.
They don't wanna answer.
They, yeah, you, you don't get a lot of answers.
Cause that kinda money, you could've bought property and built a, a nice facility for that.
Been going on since twenty thirteen.
I think twenty thirteen, cause in twenty thirteen, it was twenty-five hundred, so I just based my figures on twenty-five hundred.
Right, yeah.
It's, it's over three hundred thousand dollars.
Just Rush Springs?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I'm, I'm curious about where the thirty-five hundred dollars a month is going to, to the Senior Citizens Association. That's, that's, that'd be my curiosity.
I'm gonna go on and say, yes, I approve these POs, but I, I do think we need to visit and, and get what this is, because I, I'm just gonna say, there's not a whole lot of property, I would think, that's worth thirty-five hundred dollars a month, and I've gone to the Burden Senior Citizens Building, and theirs is extremely ni, I mean, every one of them I've gone to is nice, as far as I know, this is the only one, Sydney, that has a transaction like this on a monthly basis.
Kevin, do you recall anything about that, when that call began?
No.
No.
I just remember when it was.
Guess that would be when Jack was in office, so.
Huh?
I guess that would be when Jack was in office.
Yeah, I guess when it started. They had those building across the street from the Baptist Church there in Rush Springs, and I don't, for, I don't know if mine they lost there or what happened.
Yeah.
But then they moved into that building over there where they're at now, and, uh.
I just think if they're, if we're there for the senior citizens, that's a, that's a big, I mean, I don't mind paying rent, that's, that's a huge amount.
Yeah.
I mean, depending on what they get monthly, if they get like eight thousand dollars a month, you know, they've got forty-five hundred dollars left.
Yeah.
To me, they're almost the same thing, though.
Well, that's.
Rush Springs Senior Nutrition and the Rush Springs Senior Association is, man, it's.
I mean, I just feel like we're there for, they're there for the senior citizens, so I think we need, I don't know if it's anything we can look to, it's our business, but it's sales tax dollars, so.
I wanna find out how you run an association.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
The big deals, who's over the association?
Where's that thirty-five hundred dollars a month?
Exactly.
Who's, where's that?
They probably say more.
Well, I, I am, I am still asking questions, I don't know how far I'll get, but, um.
Get with, let's, let's ask questions together, cause I wanna find out.
I mean, it's just interesting.
Yes, I mean.
You don't sound right.
No. No. We'll get with, uh, Charles about it.
Yeah.
Cause, uh, just, I wanna see the contract too.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I wanna see, I'll get with Sydney and.
Yeah, like I said, the one that she's got is old, it's twenty.
But if that's the one we're still going by, I mean, that's.
It should have to be renewed every year, and it hasn't been.
Other than, back then, it was twenty-five hundred dollars, and now, now it's thirty-five hundred dollars.
And, and I'm not trying to tell the commissioners how to do their job, but I think I'd put it on the agenda to go out and make sure that they're doing a contract every year, cause we all have to on contracts, we can't just leave an opening contract like that, and I think they should be the same way, cause, I mean, especially tax dollars going that way. I mean.
Yeah.
Just, just a suggestion from me.
It's probably me since that first one that I've done, so.
Yeah, if it went up, you know, it should've been brought to the board in a different contract to go up on the pricing.
I just think whether we have control over it or not, with them being a different entity, that with it being sales tax dollars, we need to have a copy of that.
Absolutely.
And, and like I said, Sydney, from what I understand, it's, they're the only one. But, yes, I will, yes, I'll make.
Is it?
Yep.
Okay, item twenty-six, previous purchase orders generated by the Grady County governing bodies during the current and previous months and authorized for denied payment of such purchase orders.
Okay, uh, Grady County Fire Department com data purchasing procedures were not followed, invoice dated before P O, and it exceeded the blanket P O amount, uh, so the P O amount was seventy-five hundred, it was eighty-four oh nine twenty-two. It stated three three, and the.
Three ones when the service period.
Three ones when the service period was, and it stated three three. Highway District three Embassy Suites, proper procedures were not followed, confirmation email was brought out with requisition that had no P O number on it, it's a room at Embassy Suites, um, for two hundred and twenty dollars. Highway District two Duncan Overhead Doors, proper se, proper purchasing procedures were not followed, we had called, um, Duncan for a price on Friday, and they were supposed to call us back, and they didn't, and the service guy showed up on Friday and fixed the door, and, uh, we didn't have it in cover, cause we didn't know he was fixing the door when it's supposed to fix it, one hundred ninety-seven dollars. District Attorney West Publishing Corporation, uh, P O should've been open on or before April first, uh, purchasing not responsible for this transaction. Uh, procedures were not followed, so obviously they did a P O on four fifteen, and it should've been open on April first. Sheriff Richards Printing, um, did a return, so an invoice was, proper purchasing procedures were not followed, and but invoice was received in the mail on four fourteen and was dated four seventeen with the shipping of four, uh, four seven, sorry, with the shipping date of four seven, same invoice was brought in with the new date of four fifteen on four fifteen, it's twenty-six thirty-three. Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Yes.
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 Okay, item twenty-seven, the discussion and possible approval of county officer monthly reports. Make motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Item twenty-eight, discussion and possible approval of vested needs, request for appropriations and transfer appropriations, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Gary?
Yes.
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 And item twenty-nine, discussion and possible action on the offer for lease at public auction to the highest bidder, three oil and gas mining leases, with each oil and gas lease having a term of three years with a three-sixteenth royalty upon the described premises.
Is our man not here from? Okay, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We don't know how to do this, we've never done this, so you're gonna have to help lead this.
So I did it with the city of Chickasha, um, you know, they kinda had somebody upfront, and it was essentially was the auctioneer, and, um, they asked to start the bid, and I raised my hand, just shot off a price, and from there, other people in the room can, can continue to bid higher, and, um, then once bidding stopped, uh, from there, the winner will get with whoever at the board, email the oil and gasses, and the board approves dollar amount and the lease, and then it'll be filed after.
So Ms. Ruth, in the sheriff's house?
Uh-huh.
I generally just, I generally read off whatever in a price for, and then it's a two-thirds, but I don't know that a two-thirds acquire here, the price, and we just need to read the price, and then the attorney's kinda.
Do you have?
I do not.
Okay.
And do you have?
I don't, no, I'm sorry.
We have never done this. George probably knows how to do it.
It's kinda like a cow's sale, but you don't have to get involved as involved in whatever.
I don't.
We're outside of my, uh, expertise level here, so.
Mine too, um.
If it was cattle, it'd be different, I'd be all over if I didn't have a, through this cows.
I did have a, a lease that was here, um.
I would just read off whatever your, whatever in a price for.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's not.
So oil and gas leases.
Yeah.
Don't really have a set appraisal.
Oh, so I guess you guys just have to figure out what amount you wanna start at?
I can throw out a dollar.
Throw out a dollar.
Yeah.
I'll start at five hundred an acre.
Okay, and there's three different leases, so.
Section.
Okay.
What's, what's the first?
Okay, so the first one is lease one, section twenty-eight Township, seven north, range seven west, north of forty-two feet, block fifteen, block seven, it's the nine acres, it looks like.
Go ahead.
So we'll start at five hundred an acre.
Jewelry, so Camino's five hundred an acre.
Okay, and your company is what?
J B Energy. Then we're at one hundred.
Okay. Okay. So.
So you give.
Camino got it for five hundred acres. Three years, three-sixteenth rolling. It seems all. Okay, lease number two, section thirty-three Township, seven north, range seven west, west two feet of block four, block two forty-six Stevenson subdivision. Four point two seven acres.
I'll start off the bid at five hundred an acre.
Two hundred a bid.
Camino. Lease three, section thirty-four Township, seven north, range seven west, lock four, block one eighty-five Chickasha OT Edition.
I'm at five hundred an acre.
Okay, we'll bid six.
I'll go up to seven.
Eight.
Nine hundred?
Thousand.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred.
Do you?
Is there something in the paperwork or anything?
Well, actually, we brought, we were just interested in one track, so we actually brought our paperwork.
Okay.
So, we can go ahead and.
Sign that?
Yeah.
So, we'll figure out that, uh, see here, that, uh, track three was four point five one.
Seven nine?
So with that, times twelve hundred an acre. I've got, I've got it right here, we'll get a check filled out, get the lease signed, and we're ready to go.
Do we really wanna approve the leases next week, or do you want to do them?
We're ready to pay and sign them up.
We don't need a paperwork ready for that, do we, to discuss the potential offer?
I think we can do it under that.
Okay.
My family. I think we can. Yeah, I think we can.
Is Camino ready, or do we need to?
Um, the weather process, or what we did last time is we'll email you the lease form for approval, and then from there, once you guys approve it, it's signed, we'll bring a check down and exchange the lease for a check.
I think we can make a motion to set J B Energy, you've got twelve hundred an acre. Repeat that, repeat that for the record, repeat that track number.
Uh.
I'll get it off of the.
Yeah, it's, uh, lease number three, and it's a total of, uh, four point five one seven seven eight acres.
In the same motion, we'll, we'll accept Camino's five hundred an acre for the other two.
Okay, on lease one and two?
Yep.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
I couldn't be able to tell.
Yeah, I'm a little bit.
Yeah, I need to talk to you, I'm playing Friday, uh, I was working hunting when you called, the last time, when there were people, I was working out, and so, then they had some guys try to run me off the road, we had to have a chat with, I ran my vehicle.
Check. We just used the. Okay, so this one is leased by the county of Grady, state of Oklahoma, to J B Energy. See attached exhibit A, which we just used the legal descriptions out of the frame. And so, I like a real signature. Only real signature. I love your stamp, I love your stamp, and I want your real autograph, you know? Okay, up here, up here. There's, uh, Ken and Clark, you gotta say it, I'm signing. Here we go. I'll get you a copy of that after. She's not reading, she'll. Okay?
Okay.
Now, as far as this check, we don't have a resolution to accept the check, so.
So we'll have to put that on next week?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Type one. It'll probably be good next week, too.
I'll bet it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.